This time I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item now would be consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was last held. That was on April 26th. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote.
Just wait here.
And Craig, did you get in?
It's not there. Doc, help me. Help me, help me.
Wrong kind of doctor, Craig.
Are you sure?
Password's 123.
No, it's password.
Yes.
So that motion does pass unanimously. We'll move then to Agenda I of number two. And this is a public hearing. This will be a public hearing on changes to various ordinances, amendments. So we'll have a public hearing following a public hearing that will consider the adoption of the ordinance. I'll call on Jason Anderson, who is a city engineer and director of public works, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The various ordinance amendments are all included in the packet. We won't go over any of them in specific detail unless there's questions, but numerous sections were amended here. To go over a couple of things, 70-21 was amended to allow taxing of bed and breakfast facilities and future short-term rentals. 8651 bed and breakfast was amended to be in line with our current home occupation section, which changes it from to an interim use permit instead of a conditional use permit. 8696 agricultural district was amended in numerous locations, pretty minor changes, but does allow for certain permitted and conditional use changes or conditional use. 86230 is parking requirements in commercial areas. Most of those are laxing of the required parking due to just things that we've noticed and seen in the community. 86162 and 248 are yard modification and outside storage sections, and those were generally changed to allow for some more flexibility for approving conditions for variances in conditional use permits. Also allows for temporary storage during construction projects. So these have all gone through planning commission and different committees throughout the past six months, really, and we're bringing them all tonight for review and approval from council. If there's any specific questions, we can try to address them.
Okay, thank you, Jason. As part of the public hearing, either members of the council or members of the audience, is there any public input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the rest of the council's information, I did have some questions that I met with Jason prior to the meeting, and the first one was 8650 down to number 12. It says, and this is based upon home occupation, shall at a minimum meet the following conditions. And it says no regular business hours shall be advertised, including on social media. And I just asked Jason, I said, you know, does that make it hard for us to monitor that situation? And again, I think he explained to me, again, for the council's information, it's, we'd probably monitor it if someone would call in and complain or bring it to our attention. So just to let you know that I did bring that up. A couple other, one other area is on 86248, outside storage. And this is not a change, but it's been in there, and I just questioned it. Maybe this is a little overbearing on the city, but we're trying to say that a resident can't have more than four garage sales a year. You know, I'm not saying we should change it, but at some point in time, are we going to tell our public, our citizens, what they can and can't do, and having more than four garage sales in any 12 calendar months might be a little bit overbearing, I think.
Yeah, there is some history on that one, Russ. It goes back a number of years, I want to say maybe 12 or 20, or, you know, where there was continuous garage sales on.
Yeah, and I give Jason, I think there was, she's long passed away, there was a resident on Fourth Street who had her house and garage stuffed with merchandise that she purchased at a garage sale, various garage sales. And then she'd try and have a garage sale, maybe sell 1% of it, and then she'd ship the rest of the stuff out to the missions. I mean, I see there's a point, but, and I don't believe that there's ever been an instance since we have had this ordinance that anybody's ever brought it up, but I just bring it up for my own personal. The next one is on the storage units, 86248 on the back page, letter F. And again, cargo and shipping containers, I talked to Jason about that, and again, he's got, the letters have been sent out once already, but I think they're going to do a little follow-up and a little further action on those that haven't responded. Those that have responded have cleaned up the storage trailers, and we appreciate that. The last one was, and I think this just added, again, then that same classification under letter G. It says in all classes of residential districts, a licensed boat, open or enclosed or closed trailer camper, motorhome, recreational vehicle, or other vehicle, but no more than three units. I think we're going to add in there recreational vehicles or something like that, or similar vehicles or something. So just because otherwise it said, you have three cars parked in your residence along with these others, you could be in violation of the ordinance. So we're going to put, just change similar type of vehicles, if I remember right, right, Jason?
That's correct. We'll make that change. I'll work with Ilya on that. It references another section that's specifically talking about trailers, campers, rec vehicles. That's the intent of this language, so we'll just clear that up so there's no confusion.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? Now, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And a motion passes. Well, now, consider the adoption of the ordinance as presented at the public hearing.
I move adoption.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And a motion passes. Move then to Agenda I of number three. This is Project ST 006. This is the school pedestrian crossing signage and improvements. The action before us are receipt and consider the awards of the bids. Bids were received, and I'll call on Jason Anderson once again to report the bids.
Thank you, Mayor. So the RRFB, or Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, and enhanced school pedestrian crossing projects was bid on May 4th. Just as a brief reminder what this is, it's the installation of center medians in the turn lane areas, ramp improvements, push-button crossing improvements, and radar indicated speed signage improvements around the South Elementary School, the Marshall Middle School, Parkside Elementary, and True Light Christian School. I'll note that at the True Light location, the median will not be installed at this time, but will be considered during 2025's construction project on College Drive. So we did receive bids. We received two, one from Dunick, Inc., and one from RNG Construction. Both were very near each other in price. The low bid from Dunick was $480,250.35. RNG's bid was within $10,000 of that bid. This is overestimate. Our engineer's estimate was just over $350,000. To remind the council, we were awarded a, just about $340,000 grant for this project, a transportation alternatives grant through MIN ATP. That grant's an 80/20 grant, and with the bid numbers put into the formula, we would be down to a 70.8% match, but we did reach out to MIN staff, and they were able to come forward with an additional $44,000 to put us up to an 80% grant, which we're really appreciative of that. That's not a very common thing to have happen, so we're really happy that it was able to work out this time around. So, on this project, the local cost, the total local cost in cash only, not considering engineering costs, is anticipated to be $120,063, a little over $43,000 of which has been collected from the participating schools. We originally started out with the idea that we would split the local costs, the local 20%, 50/50 between each participating school. Now with these grants coming in over, I guess staff is proposing that the city would cover the overages with our state aid account. So, local costs that were not paid for by the school, we would propose to pay through our state aid funding, so no general fund impact there. If there are any questions, I can answer them. Maybe before we get to that, I'll just add that I think some will probably ask where the estimate was off. We typically try to do a good job of being closer than that with our estimate. Two big items, if you look at the bid abstract, were project mobilization, the cost for the contractor just to come do the work, and then the speed limit flasher signs were quite a bit out of estimate. So we were a little surprised by that, because I know Jesse put a lot of time in, albeit months ago, with vendors to sort of get an idea on what these things cost. So, we would propose to continue to work with our contractor and find out if there's any way we can get that number down post-award. I don't know if it's a timing issue, and we can sort of negotiate that by pushing off a part of the deadline on some of that signage, if that would help our pricing. We'll explore those angles, but for now, we would propose that council award the project contingent upon the MIN office of civil rights doing their review and their approval of all the paperwork, as well as the state aid office. Because this is a federal grant project, there's quite a bit of process involved. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
We'll open it up for questions. Jason, there are two items. There was a tight time schedule when this work can be done, because obviously it needs to be done when school's not in session, and on Lyon Street, there's also the access to the ball fields that the contractors have to work around. That may have also contributed to, you know, some of the mobilization issues that they have. And then I believe there was a question about, that was discussed earlier at an earlier meeting, about supply chain delivery of the sign technology. Do you want to comment about either one of those things?
Yeah, I do think supply chain issues are part of the cost concerns with some of the signage equipment. The RRFB infrastructure also was above estimate, but just not by as much. You know, I'm wondering if there's a little more demand on these speed flashers and the supply chain issues were greater, and that's why we see them so far out of cost from what we expected. You know, I think, and I have to check with Jesse, but I do believe we put a project deadline that was at the end of the summer here, and that could certainly cause numbers to go, to be skewed if they felt like they had to get that in. But our intent was to work with the contractor, if there were supply chain issues, to allow for some contract extensions, and we actually put some of that language into the contract. And we'll want to work with them and make sure that they notice that and understand that, that we're willing to work with them. From our perspective, I think we would be okay if the medians went in and the flashers went in, and some of the advanced signage came later, you know. So we'll talk with them about that and see if there's some opportunity for some.
Other questions? Russ?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And again, I spoke with Jason earlier today, and again, I'm very appreciative of the staff, and I think I relayed that to Jason, because this is not a bad reflection on our staff's estimate at all, just that I think the supply chain issues and everything else is very, very unusual that it came in $128,000 over our estimate, because usually our staff is within probably 2% to 5% of project bids and everything else. So it's not a reflection on this, it's a very much-needed project, and it's because of federal mandates or state mandates for wage salaries and things like that. So it's unfortunate that it's that much money, but I think this project just will pay for itself many times over in safety and all the schools' homes, for sure. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Russ, is there a second? Seconded by Jim. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And a motion passes. Move then to the consent agenda, if we could bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include, consider the request of Marshall Downtown Business Association for Crazy Days, that'll be Thursday, July 21st, 2022. Setting a public hearing for the MS4 permit program for the 2021 activities. Consider the application for exempt permit for the Pride and Tiger Foundation. Consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Knights of Columbus and Holy Redeemer. Consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Southwest Minnesota State University. Consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for SMSU Foundation. Consider the approval of a transient merchant license for KT's fireworks. Consider the approval of maturity to administer the health savings and medical spending accounts. And finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 13. Consider the amendment to the ordinance on boards and commissions. Kyle, do you have this? I'll call on Kyle Box, city clerk, and recognize Kyle, this is his final city council meeting as city clerk in the city of Marshall. So thank you again, Kyle, for everything you've done, and you can present this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last council meeting, the council introduced this ordinance to take action on tonight or to discuss this evening. Earlier in April, the Illinois Committee had met and had reviewed under a request of the full council to expand board and commission applicants to outside city limits, and amongst a couple of other things as well. So within the ordinance, there are revisions or amendments to the Airport Commission and the Adult Community Center Commission to allow those two commissions to accept applicants that live outside city limits. Other amendments within the ordinance include some changes from the Adult Community Center, or the Senior Center to the Adult Community Center, and then removing the hospital board from our code as well. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, questions or any input from the Legislative Ordinance Committee?
None from Illinois, just really opening this up, because it makes sense to allow for outside Marshall residency in some of these boards.
Not part of the changes this evening, but there has also been discussion about reducing the number of people, or the size of the Airport Commission, currently it's seven, and reducing that to five is, if, that may be something that we want to have additional discussion on, or if there was agreement on that, it could be incorporated into this and then save the publication cost. Airport Commission, Jason, you might want to comment on this as the, as a person who works for the Airport Commission, but the Airport Commission, for a number of years, has had, in their, they've had five people, they haven't had seven people for a number of years, but yet the ordinance says seven members.
Yeah, that's true, and I think since I've been here, it's always been five or fewer members. I can't remember having more than that. I do think it's enough for us. We don't seem to have a problem getting a quorum and having good conversations and getting participation with the smaller group, so I think it works.
Any other input on the proposed changes?
So, moving to approve this, would that then include a reduction from seven to five? Is that the proposal?
Under the motion.
I would make that motion.
I would second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion.
I think, Mr. Mayor, from my standpoint, because it's so hard to fill these spots, ideally, we could, we'd have to expand the commission, but the public interest is just not there, and it's hard to, we spend an awful lot of time trying to get people to fill spots and never do. So decreasing it makes sense, unfortunately. It'll expedite things and make a quorum easier to obtain, and so I think it's a good thing.
Expanding the allowed membership on the other two.
Absolutely.
Serves the regional need.
Because they do, and that's a fair representation of the service that both of those entities, you know, serve, so I think it makes sense to do that.
Agreed.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 14. Consider the amendment to the ordinance related to the mobile food units and food carts. Once again, I'll call on Kyle Box, city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to the last agenda item, Legislative Ordinance Committee met in April to review the mobile food unit ordinance. Really, the only change that we're being, that's being proposed in this is to allow mobile food vendors to remain on-site as long as they are still on private property and have agreement with that property owner. They do not need to close up and then move off-site to come back the next day. They could remain on private property after they are done serving for that day. So that is the only change being proposed in this amendment.
Any questions on this, or any input from the Legislative Ordinance Committee?
The input I'll put is, Steve, you said people like to have control of their own property. This is, again, giving them control of their own property. So I think it's a good change.
Any other input or questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. Agenda I of number 15. Consider the resolution authorizing the execution of the MIN master partnership contract between the city of Marshall and state of Minnesota. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is kind of a standard form contract between the city and MIN. It's an umbrella contract that allows our local agency to partner with MIN and vice versa, to exchange different goods and services or processes. It also allows the city engineer to request these smaller work orders and work processes directly through MIN staff, and both entities have that permission to work back and forth. It's a good thing, you know, some of the services that we use on a very regular basis are engineering testing services, for example, where they do a lot of our materials testing and destructive tests too, for us, and it's a really good deal. And this, another example would be if I need to call MIN maintenance and say that there's an issue on a state highway there, we have that relationship and this agreement that allows them to go do that work upon my request and vice versa. So it's a very good thing, but it's generally a pretty standard agreement, and I believe it's renewed every five years.
The five-year.
Yeah, five-year agreement. So if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions for Jason?
I move the resolution authorizing the execution of the partnership contract.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. Agenda I of number 16 is this no-removal equipment in aircraft firefighting facility, the consideration of the proposal for design services for this facility with TKDA, the firm. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. You may remember, at the last meeting, we came before the council and talked about the grant request letters that we were hoping to get submitted. So on April 29th, we did submit our grant request application for federal AIP dollars and MIN state aeronautics dollars to finance this design that we're talking about right now. So this is the actual design contractor agreement between TKDA and the city to do the actual work upon receipt of a grant agreement. By getting this processed and approved contingent upon a grant coming through, it just gets us in a position to keep on task and on time. You'll note that this design services contract with TKDA is $255,000. Total grant request was $297,000, because that included $35,000 from the pre-design, which we already did and took a look at. We're going to be able to reimburse ourselves for eligible portions, so we're making that ask. And then we're also asking for $7,000 in local costs, which covers some other things that we need to do as part of federal process. So by the time we're said and done with this design contract here, the, it looks like the local fund amount is a little over $52,000. So staff would recommend that we go forward with this approval contingent upon and fully executed grant agreement from FAA and MIN.
Okay, questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. This has had a lot of conversation and very strong support from the Airport Commission. It's been a long time coming, so it's good to keep it moving.
I have a comment. This is, and I know I'm one who preaches, but I wish we had daily air service. You know, I've been making the comment to Sharon, Brainerd has daily air service, we do not. Watertown has daily air service, we do not. I know I don't like to spend tax dollars on something that may take 20 years to come, but as Jason and I have talked, we need to take this step to try to achieve that. And I think as Marshall, and as the Airport Commission, and as airport, we need to keep striving to get daily air service out of Marshall to a hub. I don't care if it's Denver, if it's Minneapolis, but we need to compete with Watertown, Brainerd, Brookings, we need that daily air service. So I think this is a good step forward to do that.
I think another piece, too, is, I've always had an interest in the airport, but being on the Airport Commission now, my eyes have really been opened up to how much actual critical flight comes in and out of there. And it's the different kinds of hours and the intensity of, it's not just a pilot and maybe, you know, two crew people or one, you know, just the pilot and a co-pilot. There's a lot of business travel in and out, and it's amazing hours and the support that those flights get from our staff, and having that equipment properly housed and all this. I mean, this is, like Jim said, Councilman Lozinski, this is a critical step to continuing to move forward, and it's not just the air service, but it's also the maintenance work that happens out there, too. There is an awful lot of high-end maintenance that happens. There's commercial aircraft, private, you know, corporation aircraft that come up from Omaha and further that get their service work done here. And so there's an amazing amount of other things that happen at that airport that aren't seen, so I think this is another critical step that we're behind this airport and want to continue to move forward.
Any other input? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion. If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And Agenda Item Number 17, Consider the Approval of Temporary On-Sale Liquor License for Marshall Festivals. Cassie, do you have this? Cassie Weiss is our Visit Marshall Convention and Visitors Bureau Director.
Yeah, so we're looking for a liquor license for the craft beer show that's on Saturday at the Red Baron Arena. We used our liquor license for World Fest two weeks ago, so that's why we're utilizing Marshall Festivals liquor, or 501.
Any questions?
The only question I want to bring up, and we, it came up earlier for council is, and Kyle, is to get a permanent liquor license out at the Merritt Center. And I think Sharon, you said you guys will work on that. We've talked, that's come up before, like you said, Russ.
Merritt Center or Red Baron?
Red Baron, excuse me. Red Baron.
Well, we do some DUI classes.
Boy. And I think that'd be a worthy cause to look into, and I think Sharon had asked Kyle, one of his last tasks before he moves on, is to see if we couldn't get that arranged to bring it forward. I think that'd be great. I think you'd concur with that.
Yeah, it'd be awesome.
Red Baron, Red Baron, Kyle. Sorry about that.
It'll be the first thing I look into next week.
I can make that, well, I can make the whole thing a motion, yes.
So.
We'll do the temporary liquor license.
Motion by Jim. Seconded. By Craig, to allow a temporary on-sale liquor license for Marshall Festivals for an event this Saturday. Discussion on the motion? Cassie, this is your chance to promo that event if you want.
Get your tickets online. Visit marshallamend.com.
Already done.
Yeah, I thought, come through.
What are you doing during council meetings here? That was before the meeting.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes, one abstention.
And just note, Jasmine, just make a note to self that there, possibly the skids just got greased for a DUI class at Merritt.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18, Commission Board Liaison Reports. For my part, the Planning Commission has a regular meeting scheduled for tomorrow. They have canceled that meeting because there wasn't a, an agenda need to have that meeting. Southwest Regional Development Commission has their monthly meeting and the public hearing on their tax levy this Thursday. I won't be able to attend that meeting because at the same time I'm speaking, that evening I'm speaking to the Granite Falls Chamber of Commerce and the Southwest Workforce Initiative, so I'll miss that meeting. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking for my notes here that someone sent me to make sure that I knew what I was talking about. There they are. So just update on the Merritt Center. On April 4th through the 6th, they hosted a field training officer course for 26 law enforcement officers, and this is the second time that training company from Duluth has held the class at Merritt. So again, it's not, it's more than even a regional facility. This thing is getting statewide and actually upper Midwest recognition with both the law enforcement and fire training. Merritt hosted a criminal interdiction course held by the Minnesota State Patrol on the 7th and 8th of April. Thirty-eight officers attended that with hands-on training along with six K-9 units. April 12th through the 19th, the district, Marshall District of State Patrol conducted acts on, what's acts on, Jasmine?
That camera equipment.
Oh, okay, sure. So all their officers, and then they utilize the bay to install the updated equipment in their squads. April 12th, the Southwest Healthcare Preparedness Coalition conducted emergency planning training at Merritt Center with 41 attendees. The Regional Radio Board met April 20th to conduct their strategic planning meeting, and that's significant because that's normally in the basement at the law enforcement center. So getting that out to Merritt, I think, is a good thing, too, just to kind of show people the, the possibilities that that has, even for like a regional EOC, for a large disaster, a search and rescue piece. And then the Merritt Center was utilized 28 out of 30 days in April with 381 participants attending those events and training. So again, a lot of feet walking, passing through those doors. And then an update, the bonding bill is still in the House and Senate, waiting to be finalized, and I think we've got really good support on that from what I understand, is that correct? And that includes finishing the gun ranges and then also to construct a live burn structure, and that live burn structure is critical for fire training. So again, hats off to the Merritt Group and Jasmine for the work she does there. And the Airport Commission was going to meet today, but that's been postponed, so more to follow. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
I have nothing.
DEI Commission did meet on the 4th. We had some discussion on our World Cafe, which did take place this past week, so that was pretty well-attended. We had quite a few attendees at, at the World Cafe. It was held during the trade show or craft show that was out at the Red Baron, so worked out pretty good, and some of the kids that were attended were able to do some open skating, Also had some discussion, actually quite a bit of discussion on the June 10th and Marshall Pride Events that are scheduled out in June. And we have a date for the, the welcoming, welcoming week in 2022, and that is Tuesday, September 20th. We're trying for an evening on a weekday to basically see if we can attract some people in that are in town after work coming in to attend. So a little bit experimenting, trying to get that going and expand on what we had last year. So that's it for the DEI. I was also able to attend my first Public Housing Commission meeting, which was quite Just a couple of things didn't know, you know, they have a couple of openings coming on, but they're looking at approximately a 60-person waiting list onto that, to get into the, our public housing. They will be doing some work on the parking lot hopefully around June 8th. Dunic is coming in and doing the work on that. They are hoping to be able to use the parking lot across the street, which is Block 11. Parking lot, maybe. We did talk about that at the time, if there's, and they're not sure if they're going to be doing the parking lot in sections or try to remove all the vehicles and do it all at once. So they've got a few things to work out with Dunic and really see what's going on with About in 2018, they had quite a bit of tile replaced in some of the, I take it some of the hallways and a few things, and there was a problem with it. Apparently either was an installation problem or, which really relates to the same, a lack of, the amount of adhesive used. So they're working on that, and they've pretty well concluded that narrowing it down, it just does look like it was just simply not enough adhesive was put down, and right now they can actually go and just kind of pick up some of the tiles. They're looking at re-establishing a residents advisory board, kind of looking at forming that. One thing I was asked to bring up, Jason, if Street Department could take a look at the end of Winchester Street, it's a little one-block street, dead ends into a field past the one housing unit, especially after our rains this past week, the one, the street, end of the street fills up with water quite a bit. And if there's some way of doing something to help eliminate that, that is a, a private field on the end, so there may be some difficulties there, but, and the dirt is mounted up enough. I took a look at it, the water really doesn't have any place to run out in the field or anything in that direction, but maybe take a look at it, if there's something that engineering can do to help with that, because quite often there is flooding in that area. It's a very low section and really no place to go with water, so if you guys could, it would be appreciated. And that's about it. Okay, thank you, John. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CVB will meet on Thursday. Library Board met last evening. The Board voted to adopt the classification and compensation study effective in July. It was passed by a four-to-two vote. Michelle also went through the timeframe for presenting the 2023 budget process. As you know, we've probably talked about maybe changing that a little bit because the Library Board felt that Michelle really started way too early to get it submitted by, or the beginning of October. So started talking about, she'll, she'll presently put it together, starting in May, with final budget submitted after meetings with the county and the city, of course, our joint meetings, and we'll have that before October 1st. On a positive note, again, the numbers continue to increase, and Michelle said they're seeing more and more new people coming into the library, not necessarily even new people, but new people asking to get library cards, so that's a positive thing that, that they're seeing, you know, after the pandemic and things like that, that more people are starting to use the facility. That's it for the Library Board. We also met on the Transit Advisory Committee meeting. They're, they're talking about the 2023 operating, and I think that opened the one-year budget. They project that to go up a 10% over the 2022 budget. Again, 95, if my notes are correct, 95% of that will be funded through the state and 5% local. As we all know, the federal judge mandated, they're extended the no-mask policy on March 18th and extended to April 18th, so currently the drivers are not wearing masks on the buses. They continue to face severe shortages of drivers, especially in the City of Marshall and Lyon County, so they're actively recruiting, as, as about everybody is in town, recruiting people to work. So they're looking at placing the 2022 order for buses. It'll be a year, a year and a half before the buses are even delivered, and they project a 30% increase based upon availability. They also, they started talking about maybe downsizing the buses instead of the full 18-to-24-passenger bus to go to an extended kind of a transit van type of thing that carries a few less people, but they're more readily available and, and cost considerably less money, so one of the things they'll be looking at. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Jim?
I have no reports.
Okay. We'll move on then to individual items. Craig, let's start with you.
Thank you. The only thing, just to keep it brief, yeah, Shades of the Past had their role in last week, and I don't know if anybody else had the chance to, to go there, but my wife and I took a walk up and down, and I, it was, I think it was very well-attended by the participants, but it was very well-attended by just people viewing and walking, and it was, it was a nice evening, and it's just a good thing. I know it's a lot of work for our staff. Our street department does a lot to do the detour, and some people might feel inconvenienced, but I thought it was a great way to kind of show Main Street again and the businesses and, and just a lot of people in the establishments getting something to eat and hanging around, and I think it was just a really nice event, and Shades of the Past does a great job of kind of doing the community thing, so it was just a real positive thing. I just wanted to throw kudos out there for the work they did and for the night they had. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve?
So the only thing that I have a question on, Jason, the bike paths, who's in charge of maintaining those? Is it, if they're within city limits, is it us?
Yeah, that would be the community services team.
Because I, I just went running today, and there's a big, huge pothole right out in front of the Walmart one, where it just looks like the bike patches gave way, and if you're on a bike going fast, because that's fairly flat, that's a death waiting to happen.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a wash out there.
Looks like it was.
Surface water feature. We should look at that. We're near Quist.
Walmart, and, no, it was down from Quest. It's in between Walmart and Dees Ty in that area.
Okay, we can, we can review it.
Yeah, I mean, it's about a foot, perfect circle.
One of those scooters that do a header in.
Uh, yeah.
One little kid.
Recently resurfaced.
Or if somebody is running, if somebody's running at night, they're going to put their ankle right in there and bust their leg.
It was not resurfaced, but it was fogged. We gave it an oil treatment, but if there's typically like a circle like that, that indicates an issue underneath, we can probably move to put a cone on it right away and then review what's going on. So I'll make a note.
Perfect.
Good. Anything else?
Get out my voting soapbox here. May 17th, filing opens for our open seat in City Council. If anybody's listening, we would love to have three or four people run. As I said earlier today, I'll drop the fat part, Russ, because I don't want to offend you. We don't need a council full of old white men. I think it'd be good to have other people, you know, run for it. We have an open seat. I'm just encouraging people to get out, file, and to fill our council up again. And then Craig, I was going to comment to yours, I did walk down to the Roland. I enjoyed it last year, I enjoyed it this year. I need to get, I have a couple of cars that would fit in there perfect. I just never have time to get them out, but they do a wonderful job, and it's a good community event that fills our downtown up for an evening.
Very good. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, at various meetings and probably just about every meeting, we talk about how much we appreciate staff, and, and tonight, I just want to extend my personal appreciation, and I'm sure the rest of the council as well, to Kyle, and wish him nothing but the best in his new adventure in Wilmer. Kyle, you've been a godsend to me. I mean, I'm, you know, the other council members will probably holler at me when I say, I'm still the rookie at the council, but, but you, you've been a godsend to me. Every time I've called or emailed you or discussed something with you, you've provided me with an answer immediately, if not sooner than that. So my personal thanks to you and nothing but Godspeed to you and your family. Thank you very much.
And Kyle, if you have any cheat sheet notes for, to leave with us to help Russ along further, is, is, you know, let us know, okay?
I need all of those, yeah.
Well, you'll also have a phone number in Wilmer, I bet.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you, Russ. John? Well, I'm going to do, actually, about three repeats. First of all, it was Shades of the Past, yes, it was a great night. We, the weather cooperated, a lot of people out there, a lot of very nice cars going out. Jim, I'm going to agree with you on your filing for the 17th. Actually, just turned in a letter to the editor to be published, asking the same thing that you did, and I did put in there something other than old white guys or along that line, and my wife wanted me to take that out. I said, no, I said, that's too good to leave in there, so I left that in there. And the third thing is, is to Kyle, and just say thank you. Appreciate working with you and the time you're here. I know you're going to do great in Wilmer, and, but sorry to see you go, so thank you for the time that you did have.
Mr. Mayor, just want to, I, I apologize because I was not able to come to the Shades on, on last Thursday, but at the same time, I was welcoming my number 11th grandchild, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, so.
What kind of excuse is that?
Well, you got to put your prior, like Jim says, you got to put your priorities in place.
She can do that with her.
Mark, you got to be the first one on.
Thank you, John, for all, all those comments. I would just add three things, you know, one is the Southwest Regional Development Commission will have their annual meeting in Marshall this year. They moved that around the nine counties, and it is in Marshall this year. It'll be at the Red Baron Arena, the Vass Club Room, so, so that'll be good. You'll, you will all receive an invitation to that. One of the things that we have also outstanding or still kind of on the to-do list that Kyle had done work on is the status of our census appeal. The, and it's our hope that, that we will be able to do a limited recount. It could be as limited as a group quarters recount at SMSU this September, and I believe we have, you know, concurrence from the U.S. Census Bureau that that's a possibility, so, so that'd be one of those follow-up things in the interim. The, and then a legislative update. The, our sales tax extension, as I reported in the last meeting, is in the House bill. We are also in the Senate bill at this time, and both versions are identical. The, so that's good. So assuming that there is a tax bill, we should be in good shape. Now, there is uncertainty about, you know, with the less than two weeks remaining in the session, whether or not omnibus bills will actually be passed. That would include the tax bill, that would include the transportation bill, that would include the capital investment bonding bill, too. So that's the uncertainty at this time. bonding bill, too. So, that's the uncertainty at this time. The bonding request, as Craig, you've already referred to for the Merit Center, there's also one related to SMSU that is important to the community and the service co-op, and I'll let Sharon report on that because you probably are closer to the most recent information about the capital investment bill. With that, let's move on then to staff reports, and I'll move to Sharon Hanson, City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I know Councilmember Schaefer briefly talked a little bit about the bonding request, which is heavily supported by Representatives Swedinsky and Senator Dames. It's in the amount requested of about 3.6 million. Public Safety Director Marshall did testify on the House Capital Investment Committee. I believe that was April 5th, and we are still awaiting some more formal action by legislature on bonding in its entirety. Will there be a bonding bill from the legislature this year? That is also an unknown, even though, you know, informally, they've always said the even years are bonding years and the odd years are, are tax bill year. Really doesn't matter in recent years. They kind of tend to do what they can get in agreement with. So, not a lot, lot to add to Councilmember Schaefer's report, except for there was testimony by Chief Marshall, and we know that there's good support locally for the, for the bonding request. I do want to give an update on the scooter discussion that was brought up at the last meeting. Community Services Director, Public Safety Director, and myself met on Monday to, and Public Works Director to talk about some restrictions in light of the video that was shared with the council, but also there's been further complaints directed to our Public Safety Director on unsafe use of the scooters. So, we're really focusing in on Main Street, and we'll bring this back to council for formal action because their current agreement with scooters was just a one-year trial memorandum of understanding. So, there does need to be a formal approval to have them continue on June 22 on, into the next year. So, that'll be a council action item at the next meeting, hopefully, and at that time, we'll kind of share kind of what we're thinking. I did receive a call from the local fleet manager, who does not want any restrictions, and the feeling was just, you know, similar to what councils express. They want use of the, of the scooters and feel that it's a, it's a good thing for the community. So, I did express the council's very supportive of the scooter program. We're just looking at ways to, to make it safer. So, we talked about speed, things like that, but the current contract does, it does state in there that we can get user data statistics. So, that would be kind of interesting for us to see, and, and before we come back, the staff with a formal recommendation will, will look at that as well. So, today, we did have a Marshall Aquatic Center Committee meeting, too. Councilmember Lozinski was present, and Dr. Meister was unable to attend due to his other duties, but not a lot of discussion. We're really waiting on legislature, similar to the, to the rest of, of us. But if we get the green light, hopefully, we really did spend a little bit more talking about community support, having a separate committee that's not affiliated with the city to promote the aquatic center. And then, just some questions on the aquatic center from some of the residents that some of the committee members have had on loss of, of water from the pool, kind of being a little more qualitative on how we arrived at that number, and kind of being consistent on what that number is, because it kind of started out at 11,000 gallons lost. Now, we were starting to hear 15,000, and so, we're gonna come up with that calculation. I know Jim mentioned that a little bit today, too. So, other than that, last week, I put this in my update, attended the Minnesota City County Managers Association. So, it's really good to connect with other administrators, and, you know, I always kind of come back thinking, you know, Marshall does a pretty good job, and that's a pretty good community because you talk to other city administrators, kind of talk about some of their issues and challenges, and, so I think we got a good thing going here. So, that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon?
Just a question, an update on union negotiations?
We, as you know, you approved the LALS union contract this week. On Thursday, I believe we are likely to come to an agreement with the Sargent's Union. That's also through LALS, and we need to schedule a date with Ask Me. We anticipate some further information from Gallagher. There were some employee appeals that affected union negotiations. We really want to come back to them by the end of May, and I've had some informal conversations with the business agent, conversations that he can share with his members, you know, to kind of make people feel good about the process. I don't know if he's done that or not, but we anticipate meeting before the end of May.
Thank you.
And John?
Actually, it was a question back to you, Mayor, rather than City Administrator. You were talking about it. I know you had a proposal put in legislatively to do some scholarships for some occupations that are trade school, work that we need in this area and keeping people in this area. Is there any more advancement on that or any action on that?
Right. So, the, on what you're referring to is the Southwest Minnesota Council of Mayors, you know, had the advanced legislative proposal for a tuition forgiveness for trades that are, where the education is provided by Minnesota West Community and Technical College, and that the program would be mirrored after a similar program in South Dakota, and the, it would be tuition forgiveness over a period of three years, 100% forgiveness with the, with the exchange that the recipient stays in the region in that trade, in that occupation for three years. So, myself and the mayor of Laverne provided testimony at the Senate, and then the mayor of Worthington and the mayor of Pipestone testified in the House. House is virtual, Senate is in person for testimony, and both were at the, the jobs committee. The, the Senate has not released their, their jobs bill yet. However, the, as part of the proposal, there would be a, a, like a tax credit for the participating employers for their participation, which would be 25%. That would require concurrence from the House Tax Committee, and there has not been a hearing on this in the House Tax Committee. So, so that's, that, that's unfortunate because, you know, there's not much time left in the, in the session on the, that's on the Senate side. On the House side, the, several days after the testimony that was provided to the House, the Senate majority came out with a proposal that was very similar, except it was statewide, and it wasn't targeted to occupation. It was just free, free tuition. Well, that's probably going nowhere, and it wasn't tied to any, any requirement to stay in that occupation in the region, and it could even be an occupation where there wasn't a demand. So, that likely is not gonna get support from the Senate side. So, unlike the sales tax discussion, the jobs discussion has really been kind of more troubling, I guess. So, but thanks for asking that question.
Unfortunately.
Okay. Any other questions for Sharon? If not, then we'll move along to Public Works Director, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman DeCramer, you mentioned Winchester Avenue drainage. You know, just so you're aware, there's, there is no drainage piping or anything in that area, so that's a little bit of a challenge. But I do believe that the area off the end of that street, going all the way down to the next street to the east, is actually platted right of way. They are farming it, and I imagine renting it, but it is platted right of way. So, I imagine if we review that, and we would like to, we could probably just make sure that that water gets off the road and onto that field. That might make somebody mad, but that is right of way. So, I can review that, and I don't know if I should come back here and talk about it before we do anything, or if I should just kind of have it done. But if you look at historical aerial imagery, you can see how water is held back onto that road for quite some time, so.
John, I'm not sure that needs to come back here if it's just communicated to the public.
We can, we can just go clear the gutters and make it get off the street. Okay. Independence Pond, you've seen the work in the park. The pond is largely constructed. The piping's all in. That looks great. I think it looks nice anyways. Hopefully, when the weather comes around, we can get some seeding done out there. They have to do bike trail connection through that area as part of that pond project, too, and they're just kind of waiting for the soils to mellow out a little bit, dry up, so they can work with it better and make sure we don't have settlements and issues. So, when we get some warm days like we're having and no rain, hopefully that becomes more fit, and we can get that tied up in a few weeks.
Jason, I would just make a comment. I don't want to interrupt you, but the, the riprap rock on the pond side of the outlet, it looks amazing. It looks great.
Yeah, we think so, too. And I was out there this afternoon to look at a couple of issues we're having, but you can see that the, the fish and the turtles are really liking that habitat, too. They were all up in the rocks and that are underwater, because of course it goes underwater, too. So, that was pretty neat. We are looking at maybe change ordering, and I, and we don't like the word change order, but adding in some grout into some of those gaps, but keeping it low. We want to maintain the natural look, but we noticed some of our small rock that sits below those slabs has been washed out after that rain, and we just don't want to have continual problems. So, we'll look at that. This, so we're more work to do there yet, but we're, you can see the, what it looks like now and see the vision, and I, I agree with you. It looks nice. The trail project, everybody's excited for that to get started, and we may actually see some activity on the other trails yet this week, but if we don't with weather, maybe next week. So, they're, they're getting ready to get started in the park, too, and seeding the dirt area around the ball fields is a priority. It just hasn't been fit to do it yet. It's been so wet. So, I know that our Parks Department is dealing with a lot of complaints and problems there, but we're gonna try to get that done. So, bear with us. We're just waiting for the conditions to be right. I know some council people have been hearing some concerns with the alley between Whitney and High Street, where we installed storm sewer a few years ago. The street department was in there earlier this week doing some concrete work around one of the two intakes. I think the final result turned out pretty good, but I think some folks were a little upset that there wasn't any notice given. So, we'll try to work on that or think about that the next time, but the street department will be working on the other intake yet this week if the weather allows them to, so we can hopefully get that put to bed and get out of there. But just maintenance work, minor maintenance work, and we typically don't give notice for that. We probably should have thought better about it in this situation, and we didn't. So, I apologize for any calls that you've been getting. You may notice some water in the ditch by Min, Minwest Bank, by the small Runnings Pond over there, how it kind of seems to hold water more than it did in the past. When we did the project over there last year, we didn't work in that area, but we did repair a nearby tile that was underground, and we're kind of wondering if that sort of slowed drainage, because maybe that was working to, as an area drain. So, we'll review possibly putting a small tile intake into that ditch and dropping it into the pond over there, and just sort of making that go away quicker, so it doesn't turn into a wetland. Downtown parking lots, we, we have the, I believe, the council's blessing to work towards getting two of the three parking lots that we've been talking about downtown bid for construction this year. We've split them out. We have one out for bid right now that we opened bids on May 18th. That's the parking lot behind the wooden nickel. That's kind of the quickest one for us to get out the door. The city hall parking lot behind our building here was the other one we were targeting. We are working with CenturyLink, and the conversations are just kind of carrying on. So, we'll see if we can get that done and try to get that let as soon as possible, too. Our city attorney will be helping us with an agreement and some information there, too. So, tomorrow morning, we meet with Boltland Mink and the Downtown Business Group to talk about Third and Lyon and have some open discussion about what, what folks like to see or don't like to see downtown. So, looking forward to that. That's at 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and I think some of our PIT committee members will try to be, make it if they're able. We've met with Boltland Mink also on the chloride grant. We had a preliminary meeting there, and that went well. As soon as we get a little more information on what the program's gonna look like, I'll report that back to you. But I just wanted you to know that we're talking about it and working with MMU and wastewater. May 19th, we have a bid opening for West Lyon, the one block along Block 11 from College to First. So, we'll see how that goes. We're a little on the edge of our seat with availability of materials and pricing, and hopefully, with it being one block and small quantities, it doesn't affect us too much, because hopefully, they can source that, those piping materials, without too much trouble. I think, lastly, the, we met with TKDA for the first time on the airport zoning ordinance update, and talked about the JASBY, the Joint Airport Zoning Board that we'll need to reconvene. Just as background, we started that in 1974. Hasn't really been altered since, because our zoning ordinance is a 1978 document. Now that it's gonna be a new document, things have changed. I think we'll have to talk with more townships and more cities about our airspace, space limitation. So, more to come on that, and we'll work through our Airport Commission on some of that, too. But I think that's all I've got, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason? John?
Not a question, just a comment. Good thing you reminded me of it, Jason. You know, when they're working on Independence Park, that ponding area, they made a lot of trips down G Street with trucks, dump trucks, and some of those days were pretty muddy at getting through there. But I have to compliment them. They did a very nice job of each day cleaning it up. I know the one day, it probably took six, seven trips back and forth in their little sweeper, and, but got the street looking nice again after some fairly heavy mud buildup. So, just compliments to them. They did, did a nice job.
Yeah, thank you for that. Town and Country Excavating is the contractor on the project, and I'd agree, they've been extremely thoughtful in the process. And we have heard some concerns from some property owners on G Street as well, with some minor street blowouts where the truck, the weight of the trucks and the condition of the road caused some issues. We'll patch those, and we've just kind of let them know that we'll follow up on it. So, we did have some complaints there, but I think they understand.
Yeah, there's just one spot on G Street that did have that, like you said, a blowout, probably too much pressure in the other ways, so.
Okay. And any other questions for Jason? If not, Dennis?
Pardon me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Lozinski, the Helena snail's pace continues with the development of that project. We did-
I was gonna, you said it picked up to a turtle's pace.
No, no, not that fast yet. No, the Department of Ag did indicate that the environmental consultant on behalf of Helena has submitted a, an additional request or advising the MDA as to what they will be doing. They'll be inspecting for additional specialty chemicals. That was one of the areas of concern. I have let Helena know that we do have considerable concerns about the hazardous substandard condition of the Quonset, and who's gonna take it down, who's gonna pay for it, and the purchase agreement does require them to do a complete fertilizer analysis and cleanup, and since that was nothing but bulk dry fertilizer, I think it's gotta come down, and concrete's gotta be removed, and you gotta test underneath it. But that, that's still the unknown issue and what to do with that particular site.
Well, nature's gonna take it down here shortly.
Quonset's getting in really bad shape.
Yeah, it's, it's open on both ends, and then the, the office side of it, all the windows are broken, doors are broken. So, we may be coming back for a request for a declaration to take it down by council, but we're not at that point yet. Broadmore Valley, City Administrator Hanson and I have spent some more time with property owner Paul Sheerholz. Considerable time this afternoon, again, regarding the Minnesota Housing Finance $500,000 grant, infrastructure grant that has been awarded to Mr. Sheerholz, and we're kind of at loggerheads as to how the infrastructure should be, how that grant should be applied to the project. Roads, water, electrical, everything needs to be looked at. Roads, water, electrical, everything needs to be looked at, and we've, we, the city have advised, have advised him to proceed with an engineer, because the city is involved with the inspection, and the grant indicates that the scope of work has to be approved by the city of Marshall. So more will, no progress was made today, but we'll continue to work on that. And the next, in North Seventh Street, annexation, with the approval of the ordinance amendment tonight, indicating that solar farm is allowed as a conditional use permit, the first call tomorrow morning is to the attorneys for the buyers, to have them submit the annexation petition, so we can proceed to have the discussions with the township pursuant to the orderly annexation agreement. Block 11, all of the.
And, and that area will continue to be zoned agricultural?
Yes, it will.
So the, part of that ordinance, it allows up to six horses, right? So that should allow that adjacent property that has animals there to.
Correct.
Be part, if they chose to be part of this.
Yes.
Okay.
At the present time, yes, we've not approached them about that annexation issue, but yes, they can continue to have horses at that.
Right, she could, prior to this, that would've been a problem.
Yes.
But I don't believe they're part of the annexation, they're not part of what we're annexing.
Right.
Unless they wanna be. Unless they wanna come join us, we're not annexing them.
But it would be an island, if they're.
I know, that was much discussion at the meeting, and.
Right.
We also don't wanna necessarily provide, not that we don't want to, but services would be quite a headache to provide them services here right now.
But, but, but they're part of a larger island, there are other, are there are other pieces of property that are owned separately, so they're not just a little isolated. No, there's MCP, there's Peterson, there's Borbum, and there's Hiskin, there's four additional properties prior to getting to the WAPA property.
Kinda along those lines, though, about them being, even if they were orderly annexed, if I understand it right, we, the, the furnishing of city services is something that is, is required or desired if it's feasible and practical, but they don't have to have city sewer, and they wouldn't necessarily have to have city water if it's not practical, correct? They just have to meet the applicable standards, so if they're, they had to have to have a conforming onsite, and it would be the city's requirement, or the city would be required to ensure that they have adequate wastewater, but they're, they would not be required to maintain all city services, even though they were in city limits, correct?
They certainly have, have access to the city street there.
Right.
There's a lot of truck traffic comes off of one of those properties.
Right.
Yeah.
But I, but my, my thought is, I'm thinking particularly of like the Borbum.
Yep.
And the Hiskin property.
Correct.
They would not be required other, until practical.
Right.
Because it's not dissimilar to the Buffalo Ridge concrete, and those other, where services weren't brought there right away.
Right.
Okay.
Generally, oftentimes, the request for services is what brings in the annexation, and this is kinda just the opposite.
It's backwards, right, yep.
Continuing, Block 11 paperwork, the, the development agreement, the deed, all of that is ready to go, we're just waiting on the title commitment, so that the developer can, you know, has the assurance, has verification that the seller, city of Marshall HRA, is in fact the owner and has good clear title. So we're waiting for that, and I, too, attended Shades of the Past, and I did make, no, it's not a mistake, I made a, a thought out loud, I said, gosh, my dad had a car just like this when I was younger, but I can't remember what year it was, 55, 56, 57, Bel Air, I'm not sure, I did get a 10-minute speech on how I could tell, I learned much difference between a cat eye versus a circle blinker indicator on the front, and so I could not re, and also that the radio inside, one year they were circular, one year they were rectangular, and, yeah, so I, I did get quite a, quite a education in.
So did you dig out photographs to confirm?
I just remembered the color, and it was four doors, this one was two doors.
Two doors.
I thought I was doing well by remembering four doors, it's the first car I ever remember my dad having.
That's awesome. He gave that speech to somebody at Shades of the Past on Mustangs and Shelby's about how you could tell the difference, and they're just like, really, Jim, you don't need to go into this, but I did.
They were more interested in the Tri-5 Chevy, weren't they?
We're not, but there's, there's, there's a way you can tell the difference between a make-believe Shelby and a real Shelby, so next year, I'll give that speech to whoever's interested.
Yes, nothing else.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. The remaining items on the agenda include the Administrator Brief, thank you to the staff for the completeness of that, I think everybody appreciates the detail there. The information items, including the building permits and the listing of the upcoming meetings, are there for the council's information. Is there anything else to come forward this evening?
We adjourn.
Second motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to adjourn this meeting, discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close of voting. Motion passes, we are adjourned.